Hey guys, we're Soundcheck and this is Control.
Yeah, I know my people watching over me. Thoughts turn to poetry. Followed up my feelings, but now I'll say I'm open.
Walking down the street and the eyes are suffocating. Your cat calls and tears, I don't feel that's a parade.
Hopefully I'll change shit and make a difference. Make 'em pay if they're saying I'm an Asian whiskey. That's a preconceived idea. Cryin' near a river while you care about Ukraine. But now I have my people in it.
Whenever I fall over, people let me stand. But they never help me when there might be blood on their hands. And I've been working, singing, working under trying for hours. But I never have to work and I don't have the power.
(singing) Control, who told? You and you can take my rights from me. No one needs to know how I can't know. Unless you will strip me of my dignity.
Yeah, power is a part of my steam. But if it comes to me, I'll use it, not abuse it. I won't put others under me. For the likes make millions. I'll make a damn name for myself. Can't even say how much hate that I felt. But I'm feeling my alliances crumble. My spirit's really rising out, climbing off the rubble. From the ashes, flashing views on the news daily. Google Maps crashes when you search for true safety. The world's like a criminal that's under dangerous. I gotta say, they were better than Dr. Plagiarist. Walk down the street, get stared down, so I stand up. Now I'm buried with my hands up, it was bad luck.
Anger wasn't part of my plan, but it is coming fast. So we standing up and standing up, just above the glass. While my oppressors make billions, I examine myself. Can't even say how much pain that I felt. Pushed and asked, some days I can't walk. Still working these tasks, got to find the thing. So I'm doing that fight. You know what's called right? A smile while it cries. But my name proves I ain't at the large. My friends keep dying, so I'm trying to inspire. And then my ideas fall into the fire. But I'm still here, I'm a survivor.
(singing) Control, who told? You and you can take my rights from me. No one needs to know how I can't know. Unless you will strip me of my dignity. (singing) Control, that's right for power. Things seem better, but it's only speaking louder. Man in control, that's right for power. Things seem better, but it's only speaking louder. Man in control, that's right for power. Things seem better, but it's only speaking louder. Man in control, that's right for power. Things seem better, but it's only speaking louder. (singing) Control, who told? You and you can take my rights from me. No one needs to know how I can't know. Unless you will strip me of my dignity. I wanna be safe, safe with you. Wanna be brave, what can I do? Have I asked for help? I don't wanna be alone. Safe, safe with you.
I know the future was quite indoor. I've been afraid for, but after all, the lies would make me scared. I know it's horrible, and it's intolerable. It's only too hard for us to make it worth it. I've been hoping for a long time, you might change. Say you're sorry. Maybe on the same page. When I'm always the one who cries after we fight. Sometimes I just wanna leave in the night. Wanna feel safe with you. But I don't understand, what can I do? When you hurt me again and again. Maybe I could find myself some better friends.
(singing) Safe, safe with you. Wanna be brave, what can I do? Have I asked for help? To live through alone. Safe, safe with you. Safe, safe with you.
The military, it's getting scary to handle. I can't even pass the torch, so I pray to carry the candle. Fear of vulnerability, can't be getting it tangled. Cause I see the family photo just sitting there on the mantle. staring up at me, wonder who I'm gonna be. When I'm with you, I'm someone free. I got the world under me. Got the spirits and the energy, this is my legacy. Be backing down to my enemies, ain't what you'll ever see. This is new me, 2023, the mission. Trying to never dwell on any blessings I've been given. Woo's hand, cause this shit is for the children. And I never really cared when they said that I was different. My DNA's all paid, I say that shit with pride. I don't know what game y'all playing, I'm in it for the ride. I've always had all my patience, I never take my time. Better stop and take a breath, cause I'm not even in my prime, yeah.
(singing) Safe, safe with you. Wanna be brave, what can I do? Have I asked for help? I don't wanna be alone. Safe, safe with you. Safe, safe with you. (singing) I know it's hard to be alone. I know it's hard to be alone. I can't resist it. Cause I'm torn. I don't want things to be this way. I know I break myself to say. It's something I know is true. I need you to be safe with me. Wanna be safe, safe with you. Wanna be brave, what can I do? Have I asked for help? I don't wanna be alone. Safe, safe with you. Safe, safe with you.
Thank you guys so much. The first song we played was called Control. And it's a little song about how people think they have more control over you than you have over yourself. And the one that we just played was called Safe With You. Just about wanting to feel safe in your community.
And this next song is called Be Him. And it's a song that I wrote quite a while ago about my experience as a trans person dealing with gender dysphoria. I think they got a dream of being not a queen, but a king. Got a fantasy of skinning their knees and doing boy things. I think they got a wish for an love in that relationship. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, want that. I think they got a dream of leaving their pain and tears behind. I think they got a fantasy that they'd be pretty if they were a guy. I think they got a wish to be someone who doesn't think like this. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, want that. Ever tired of seeing guys thinking shit? I really want his eyes, I want his hands. I wanna look just like him. Are you ever tired of watching TV thinking, well, that's who I wanna be? Wanna be him? Just let me be him. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, want that. And I know that last feeling is not defined by hands or hearts or your eyes. But in my mind, I tell myself that this will never be mine. I need to be exactly who you are. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that, I think they want that love. I think they want that. I want that.
This next song is a poem that I wrote called Change Me. About not letting other people change who you are. And we turned it into a rap song, so here we go. (singing) We don't need a trick, no middle ground. I got a perfect plan, tune is every April. I'm a fool who I wanna. He proves to shine bright, and he is so much easier to sign up. So you know that I've seen, and let my mind bond it. Every time I write, it gets a vision of one, yeah. And I'm living my fullest, from east to west. So you talking about a killer with his speech, so that's yeah. Can't change, won't change, yeah. Can't change, and I won't change. Can't change, won't change, yeah, yeah. (singing) But I'm looking at the prison, my manifestive. The challenge is to get a bad impression. I packed a weapon in my hand, so need to carry license. I get very powerful in this area. You talking about a major competition. Where's my competition? All the white folk are probably scared of my religion. When I see a sheriff, I get terrified in prison. Where are my folks?
Where are my conditions?
Sheriff side of window, sitting, put me on a stimulant. See what people telling me, they'll leave the house and live a bit. Police trying to make it amusing, I'm procrastinating. Get me on track, but I see me acting fake. That's probably famous, city diving, you can blame me. You improve deadly, but you always think to save me. That's why I'm always making fans feel crazy. I don't think that any setback is gonna change me. Can't change, won't change, yeah. Can't change, and I won't change. Can't change, won't change, yeah, yeah. Ari Chapin on the saxophone, everybody. Can't change, won't change, yeah. Can't change, won't change, yeah. The best song, you know, it's making fans feel crazy. I don't think that any setback is gonna change me.
So this next one is called Every Day. It's a song that I wrote, just about how every little step matters. Why does it feel like the world is keeping me? Pushing me down so hard I can barely scream? Why does it feel like the world's against me? Treats my people wrong with no apologies? And they say it's hard to go against history. It's almost like the most I can do is in my dreams. So help me when I ask. Tell me it'll be okay. Tell me everything I stand for won't be a waste. Help me when they say it'll never change. Cause I don't wanna hear, it doesn't matter anyway. It matters every day. Why does it feel like no one is really safe? The rules and regulations taking up all our space? Why does it feel like you have to work towards this heart? The real virtue will survive, won't take us very far. They still say it's hard to go against history. Let all the white hearts make the dreams a reality. So help me when I ask. Tell me it'll be okay. Tell me everything I stand for won't be a waste. Help me when they say it'll never change. Cause I don't wanna hear, it doesn't matter anyway. It matters every day. If it means fighting, the hardest fights. You know we won't back down, 'cause into the law. You know we won't give up trying. You know we'll keep on surviving, even though they say it's hard to go against history. Let all the white hearts make the dreams a reality. So help me when I ask. Tell me it'll be okay. Tell me everything I stand for won't be a waste. Help me when they say it'll never change. Cause I don't wanna hear, it doesn't matter anyway. It matters every day. We'll keep on trying. Go until we survive. We'll keep on trying. It matters every day.
This next one, we wrote as a part of one of the workshops we did at a high school that we visited. So as part of this group, we go, like I said, and we do little workshops, little songwriting workshops. And kind of take other high school students through our process. And then they also help us brainstorm for new songs. It's a win-win. So this came out of one of the workshops we did. This next one's called Head Above Water. They talk about the money, but who pays the price? The town's blood is burning, melting all the ice. What can we do? It's time running out. When all anyone can do is scream and shout. Your head's on the phone, you're searching. My dreams, I can't see for a reason. I can fly, I can see, I can see the world. I don't know what goes in the world, you're searching. They talk about the money, but who pays the price? The town's blood is burning, melting all the ice. What can we do? It's time running out. When all anyone can do is scream and shout. Gotta keep your head above water, head above water. Head above water, head above water. Keep your head above water, head above water. Keep your head above water, head above water. They say it's up to you to make this right. Cause they don't have the courage to join this fight. We can try, we can do what we need to. But this world won't fix itself all night. They talk about the money, but who pays the price? The town's blood is burning, melting all the ice. What can we do? It's time running out. When all anyone can do is scream and shout. Gotta keep your head above water, head above water. Head above water, head above water. Gotta keep your head above water, head above water. Keep your head above water, head above water. This world, we're inherently. And your lack of care is embarrassing. We all try our best to voice all our concerns. But no matter here, we gotta see. They talk about the money, but who pays the price? The town's blood is burning, melting all the ice. What can we do? It's time running out. When all anyone can do is scream and shout. Gotta keep your head above water, head above water. Head above water, head above water. Gotta keep your head above water, head above water. Keep your head above water, head above water.
Thank you so much. So this next song is called Mother. I wrote it about how we don't treat the planet as we should. So I hope you enjoy. Bye-bye. My love for you goes far beyond just a relationship. It's not real if we don't feel so worth the pain it's in. I close my eyes while you hold me in your arms. You always know how to heal all my scars. I'm fast asleep while you're awake and fighting for your life. We switch the roles and I'm gone before you count to five. You deserve so much more than this life. You hold my future in your eyes. Mother, mother. Mother, mother. Mother, mother. Mother, mother. God, did you hate it, tell you what you said, sorry? Yeah, we did nothing as we watched you slowly die. I can't lie, I just start my crying. I hope you know I'm never trying. Mother, mother. Mother, mother. Mother, can we be loved? So loving is everything we take from you. Send us on a trip, what we need to do to fix all the harm we've caused. Mother, can we make this right? Can you keep them away from respect for you? Please, that's what it is we need to do to learn from everything we've lost. Mother, be forgiven. To be forgiven. No, there's no point in doing. Mother, mother. Fight. Stand up. Burn. Thank you. Okay, so time to meet the band. On my right, I have Alex here. And who's a little bit hidden, but plays a very big part in this band, Ari Chapin. That's called Aunt Flinna, two instruments. Another person who's a little bit hidden is Gigi, our wonderful drummer. To my left is Abby. On guitar and vocals is Cameron. On mandolin and his amazing rapping is Isaac. And then of course, the one that brought us all together is Brian, who also plays piano. And my name is Theo Quini, and we are Soundcheck.
And Soundcheck is a collection of students from, representing seven different high schools from basically central Vermont. We come together to write music to address social justice issues. And if you have no students who'd be interested, they can audition. Just contact the Flynn Education Department. You're awesome, thank you for having us here.
I know it's an experience that's always getting worse. Sixteen years old and clutching your purse and your keys. Knowing society sees you as an object. And that they think that's something I could simply accept. Eight-year-old men commenting on my clothes and my body. I never know what something means, like or if they bought me. I tell myself I'm conceited, needy, bitter. I'm insecure, I mess, and I'm more a morbid-er than I say. I don't want that. I came back a little whirlwind, night is turning, I'm gonna be a rich man. I think we all know, in your life, sometimes it's hard putting yourself in mine. And this year, we've been waiting, waiting up for you, like yesterday. Put it back, I thought it was over, wait. It's a hard doing, and it's a right, even if we didn't want to. We're not hearing us, you can't hear us. We're like your best, you're not beating us. That's the best of the world, that everyone forgets. Come on, pretty girl. (singing) We don't need a trick, no middle ground. You shouldn't store that, keep falling down. We don't need a trick, society's made. We're waiting, we're just, no one to escape. Strong boys, pretty girls, living in a place. Strong boys, pretty girls, living in a place. Strong boys, pretty girls, living in a place. Strong boys, pretty girls, living in a place.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming out this afternoon. The reason we're doing this event is manifold. Number one, I wanted the opportunity to hang out with Grace Potter and some wonderful young Vermont musicians. And by the way, let's hear it for Soundcheck. Great job. That's reason number one. And number two, we knew all along that the sun was gonna shine today. That's what happens when the US Senate, you get the secret information about UFOs, weather, all that stuff. And we knew it was gonna be sunny today. And we think people of Vermont- And we think people of Vermont deserve a day in the sun. Having said that, there'll probably be a tornado in three minutes, but what can you do? And the third reason, the real reason we're here today, is we wanna put a focus on the arts. And what it means to all of us as human beings. And we don't talk about it enough. You know, I think when we think of entertainers and musicians, we think, well, that's great. You know, they put on a good performance, and it's nice, and we enjoyed it. You know, the TV show was good, or this concert was good, and all that stuff, or the book was good. But the truth of the matter is, if we don't have people, and point of today is we want more and more young people to have the space in schools and elsewhere to express what's on their mind and what they're feeling. If we don't have that as a society, we're in trouble. Because artists are in many ways, you know, the gateway, provide the gateway to our soul. They express our emotions, they can describe our relationships, our losses, our suffering, our pain, our joy, our loves. And without that, we are much lesser people. And I worry very much that in the midst of tough school budgets in Vermont and around the country, a lot of school districts are saying, well, you know, we gotta make a choice. Either we can have a language teacher, or we can do the arts, and we need that language teacher, and we're just gonna have to cut the arts. And that's going on all over this country. Saying, the point that I wanna make today, it is absolutely imperative that we stand up, and we sell, we make it clear to school boards and everybody else, that the arts are an essential part of human life. We've gotta expand the arts, not cut it. So what we're doing today is not only having Grace, and Grace will be out in a minute, and some young people perform, but we're gonna do something unusual and allow Grace and these young people to come up here after the songs and to talk a little bit about how they got into the arts, some of the obstacles that were in their way, their joy, their pain, and what we have gotta do to make it easier for young people to be able to express what is in their souls, which is what art is all about. So, without further ado, I am delighted and proud to introduce one of the great artists in the state of Vermont. Please welcome Grace Potter.
Oh, wow. What a beautiful day. This is exactly what music, art, and performance is all about, is having a beautiful weather day and then taking credit for it. I ordered this up special, just for you guys. Thank you, Bernie, and thank you so much to Soundcheck for opening things up and making beautiful, inspiring music. Everything about this is making me happy. And if you can hear that, that's the sound of, that's the spirit of Vermont coming through a PA system. Saying, "We wanna be heard, we wanna be seen, we wanna find a way to create and shape our world through creativity, art, cinema, performance, and connection." It's how you hold a community together. I live way up on a mountain to the sun. It's the greatest place in the world to hide. And oh, the world is falling down. I know if I fall, I'm gonna hit the ground. I grew up way down an older road. It's where I went to hide, it's where I went to find a hand to hold. So when the world started falling down, I didn't know where to find the ground. I know big places, strangers' faces. The open road is waiting for me. And when I come home, I knew I'm not alone. Way up on that mountainside. I live on mountainside. It's the greatest place in the world to hide. And when I knew I was ready to shine, the whole world was waiting to be mine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. Thank you. That was one of the first songs I ever wrote when I was probably eleven or twelve years old. And I put it together onto a recording in a barn in Face in Vermont. But then came the question, "How do you put a CD out? Like, where do you go? And who makes the CDs? And where would I sell them if I did make them?" And so, my closest answer was, I don't know, FedEx, Kinko's, just start printing them. Start burning them on your dad's computer at his office. And that's exactly what I did when I started out here in Vermont. But since then, things have changed a lot. And I've clawed my way through some challenging times as an artist in Vermont, as well as some incredible tops-of-mountain-type experiences. So I'm here to share a little bit of all of that with you today. So that was the beginning. Would you like to hear a brand-new song I wrote? All right, I'm gonna take you down the road here. I'm gonna do... Oh, look at that, that's my husband and son as my guitar techs. Eric? Hi, guys. Are you hiding, or do you wanna wave and say hi? Okay, he did, he waved. Oh, look at him carrying that guitar. Thanks, buddy. Oh, see, I grew up in a family of artists as well. And they are here, my brother Lee, the poet, my dad Sparky, the sign maker, my mom Peggy, the music teacher and bowl painter. We spent a lot of time at farmer's markets, where all of us would be sharing our work with the world in what I believed, growing up, was the only place it was possible. Like, a gazebo, I mean, a bandstand was a really big deal. This would've been a huge gig for me, growing up. But we had the Odd Fellows Hall and the Valley Players Theater in Waitsfield. And then we had Harwood Union High School, where I went to school. Got some Harwood kids here right now. But since then, I've traveled my way across the world many times over. And it's made me into a very different Vermonter. That it's kinda weird to be a standout, doing something that comes so naturally. And I know how many amazing, talented people, how many big fish live in this small pond. So it's an honor that Bernie has asked me to represent the voices of Vermont here on stage today. And bringing it out to the world and bringing this message to the world is really, really, more than anything, the purpose that I think has grounded me and brought me back to Vermont. Spending time away from Vermont, you don't realize how special it is until you see what else is out there. And it's pretty wild stuff. So this is my new song for my new record, it's also the title track. It's called "Mother Road." I checked in at the crossroads, I met some strange folk. They ran a cheap motel. I could hear every whisper through the walls of the rooms. Felt a little like a prison cell. I wrote a song about a dream I had, and they rang the dinner bell. And they whooped and they hollered when I came in, saying, "Girl, you're going straight to hell." Down Mother Road, once again I turn to you. 'Cause you know how I feel, mama, you've been run over too. So can I lean on your shoulder, just until my feet find the ground? And wherever I'm headed, mama, don't let it be down. I took a little detour out to the crater. The sky was wild with rage. I drove my car like a rocket, taking off down that sunset straightaway. There's an endlessness in the way I feel when I wrap my hands around that wheel. Only I know just how far I'm gonna go, go, go. Down the Mother Road, I always come back to you. You know just how I feel, you've been run over too. So can I lean on your shoulder, just until my feet find the ground? And wherever I'm headed, mama, don't let it be down. And I don't really know if the day will ever come when I find that peace within. But as I roll down this rugged highway, I'm closer than I've ever been. Caught in Oklahoma, driving too fast. I felt my world slow down. And I made my confession to the highway patrol. I said I was lost, but now I'm finally found. Well, she gave me a ticket anyway. But I didn't put up a fight, 'cause I've driven a million miles, lived a million lives. Now mama's headed home tonight. Down the Mother Road, I'm always gonna come home to you. Show me the way, mama, just like you always do. Yeah, 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 I'm gonna find my true north. And I'm gonna find my true south. I'm gonna find my true west. Someday I'm gonna figure it out. But wherever I'm headed, wherever I'm headed, mama, don't let it be down. Thank you. I love being out here, I love exploring Vermont. And today, we had a chance to drive down through White River Junction. We had an exploration of Queechee. I went and visited a couple of businesses on the way to the town hall down in Hartford. And it just astounded me how little I know, even after growing up here my whole life, how many places there are to explore. And I wasn't gonna say anything about it because my kid wasn't with me. But it was pretty amazing to see the train running and to feel the clickety-clack of a train and remember the feeling that I had when I was a kid of wondering how far that train was coming from. And that there's something connected from maybe all the way down and way down south. And I didn't even know what "down south" meant when I said it. But I remember, you know, going through Waterbury and seeing the train and saying, "That thing is from everywhere." And so that's really what art became to me, was about soul-searching and exploring, both physically and mentally. And I didn't know if it was gonna be music or theater, if it was gonna be art or cinema. And it turns out, you don't have to choose. You need to tap into every medium you have and explore the depths of your heart and fail as often as you feel like it. That's the best part. All right, so I'm gonna do one more song. This is my failure, failure slash redemption song from the early days. I probably wrote it about halfway in. So now we're going halfway back down the clock. I don't think the sunshine is treating this guitar very well, but... This is also the first song that ever got put on TV. So it was the first amalgamation of music that had been written in the state of Vermont and had found its way onto the screens of Grey's Anatomy. It was such a big deal to see it happen and to watch it come true for me, except that we didn't have cable. And so I didn't, I had to wait for the DVD to get shipped to me. We got lost again, we drove to the end of the road. And a red-faced man taught us to do what we're told. It was the twenty-third night. And things ain't bad, and things ain't right. So tell me, are we falling or flying? Are we falling or flying? Are we living or dying? Maybe I'll never know. The air is so heavy, it could drown a butterfly. And I know what I'm looking for, I will not find tonight. Oh, it was the thirty-seventh night. Things ain't bad, but things ain't right. Are we falling or flying? Are we falling or flying? Are we living or dying? I guess we'll never know. I guess we'll never know if we're striking rock ahead and go. Sometimes it's hard to tell if there's a life behind this song. But I know tomorrow, maybe today won't feel so long. 'Cause on the 42nd night, the room was dark, but the stage was bright. Are we falling or flying? Are we falling or flying? Are we living? Are we dying? Though my friend, this too shall pass. So play every show like it's your last. Thank you. And thank you again, Bernie, for having me here. Are we gonna open it up now to the whole group of musicians? Great. All right, we're gonna do a little technical changeover. So here's what's gonna happen. While they're doing that, I'm gonna just give you guys a moment to talk amongst yourselves. We'll move some things. And Bernie, do you wanna talk?
Yeah, I'll do yours.
Oh, maybe don't talk amongst yourselves. Maybe Bernie's just gonna talk.
All right, what we're gonna do now is, see, Grace sang. That's the easy part. Now we're gonna psychoanalyze her motives. Find out what motivate her, what are obstacles, or fears, or joys. And in her arms, I see one of her joys, right? So what we're gonna have is Grace be part of a panel. And we're also gonna bring out some young people from three separate Vermont bands. Let me introduce you. You already heard the young people from Soundcheck. And that is Dia Kulkani Kalrani and Alex Yom Halberg. They're with Soundcheck. Then we're gonna have with us some people who are gonna... Young people who are gonna conclude the event later on. And they are with a group from the Northeast Kingdom called Kingdom All-Stars. And that's Jazzy Bogey and Liza Amos. And they're gonna be on the panel. And then we're also gonna have Said Hilleb Bule, who's a founding member of the Burlington-based group A2VT. And then what we're gonna do... They're gonna chat for a while. I'm gonna ask them some hard questions. And then we'll open it up to you. So do some thinking about the questions you'd like to ask Grace and the young people. And then we'll conclude with some music from the Kingdom All-Stars. Okay. It seems to me that what we wanna do is to encourage more young people to express what's on their minds and on their hearts. And I wanna talk to these young people in Grace to see what's motivated them, what obstacles have come in the way, and where we, as a state and a nation, can go. So let me start off with Grace and say, Grace, when did you first get the sense that you wanted to be an artist? What are some of the obstacles that you had to face? And where would you like to see the nation go in terms of the arts?
Okay, so, that's a lot. But I think the answer is that... I think music was inside of me from an early age, but so was a lot of other art. I always felt... I'm gonna get up here. I always felt extremely connected to... There was like a communicator inside of me, like an engine that I just needed to touch. And when I got finally to a school, I thought, okay, this is my place. This is where I'm gonna find my people. But it was actually really challenging for me to find my voice and to get to a place where anybody else wanted to be touched by the same noises that I was making. In fact, I was quite loud. And ill... I was hard to restrain, apparently. And I also grew up legally blind, so I didn't test with the other kids. So I'd end up in the Learning Resources Room for all the tests. And I felt that I didn't belong in the standard. Something about showing my inner light felt like it was something that I needed to earn the right to do. And while at my house, at home, I was inspired to find my niche. I found myself becoming increasingly impatient with not finding the stage and not finding a place for me to land. And it turned out, as I was going through the history books in Vermont, there actually weren't any spotlights. There was one at the Flynn, and then it burned out. And there was literally no spotlights to stand in, in the state of Vermont, for a good chunk of my childhood. So maybe that explains it. But I think it was a deeper concern for me that I felt like, yeah, like a very strange person, a fish out of water in some ways. But coming from the small pond that I came from, I did find that it made it much easier for me to climb my way out and to find support by leaning more heavily on the extracurricular activities. I was speaking down the south about how I took bagpiping lessons, which is the... If that's not a Vermont move, I don't know what is. But it was really because I wanted to touch on every and any medium I possibly could in order to give myself a chance to find the place where I could shine the brightest and where my purpose could be found and shared with the world and where people actually wanted to hear me. Because it was sort of hard to find my voice at first. So it's amazing to be here today with all of these incredibly talented people who have voices and who have found a medium to share them in.
All right, so let me ask you another question.
Okay.
How in God's name do you write a song?
Well, it starts with a thought that probably doesn't belong to me, but just sort of comes through. And I always...
Comes through? What does that mean?
It's like a crying baby from the universe that's coming down like a lightning bolt and saying, "I have a thing to say. You gotta catch me. Come catch me."
How come I have never seen that lightning bolt? The crying baby coming down from the universe? Missed me, but I...
You were too busy fighting fossil fuels to deal with lightning bolts, man.
But that's interesting. All right, let me get to the young people. And I wanna... You've already heard from Soundcheck. And that's Dia and Alex. All right, guys, tell us, how did you get involved in music? What are some of the problems that you're facing? What are some of the joys? Do you like it? Et cetera, et cetera. Take it away.
Well, I'll start.
Yeah, stand up and...
Oh, okay. Okay, my name is Dia Kulkani. I'm a rising senior, and I go to Montpelier High School. And yeah, so I've been singing pretty much my entire life. There's videos of baby me singing gibberish before I could talk and all of that great music. So music has been a huge, huge part of my life, and so has dance. But unfortunately, when dance fell through, because like foot issues, I picked up music, and I've been writing songs. And I have some songs out. And it's just been a really great, wonderful, creative process to write music with just myself and also with some of my bands, including Soundcheck. And one of the reasons that Soundcheck is so important to me and why I love being in the band so much is that not only do we write music and we get to perform with amazing other high schoolers, we actually get to write songs about social issues and social justice, which is so, so important, especially for really big events or just really small events, really any events, which we can speak to our social issues. Yeah.
Good. Alex, do you want to say a few words?
Yes. I'm Alex Yom Halberg. I use he/him or they/them pronouns. And I have been so in love with music and theater for so much of my life. I remember... I think this got pretty annoying for my parents, actually, but I would make up little songs all the time. There was a phase, maybe, when I was like 8 to 12, where I would just sort of sing constantly and never shut up about it. I'm adding up that now. As you can tell, I'm not singing right now. But I, as I just started getting older, I sort of wanted to combine my passion of social justice with my passion of music. I've been really interested in social justice for all my life, even before I realized I was trans. But I've always sort of just not really understood why people have to hate other people for no reason. And I've always wanted to speak about that. I have a picture in my room. Thank you. I have a picture in my room. How old would I have been? Like, young, in 2016. And it was a sign that says, "Vote Bernie Sanders. Vote your conscience." And I still have that up on my little board in my room. And I was just thinking about that while you were talking. And I was like, wow, I did that when I was really little. And I'm still doing this kind of thing. And I'm still speaking about this. And Soundcheck is just so amazing for me to really be able to talk about who I am and sort of what I want in life and what I think everyone deserves. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Said, you wanna jump up? Said is a founding member of A2 Vermont. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Happy to be here. My name is Said. S-A-I-D. I'm from Somalia. I'm not the pirate. I'm the farmer. You get it? I've been here for almost 20 years. I love what I do. A2VT is my band. Africa to Vermont, that's what it means. "Wuniski My Town" is a song that put me in a mop. And since then, I've been consistently making new music and doing shows. And my music, my message is about just bringing two cultures together. Africa to Vermont. And my message is... Thank you, thank you. And that's what my message is. And anything necessary to influence the young youth, especially. Because we have a lot of refugees that come in Vermont. We wanna show them confidence. And if we confidently doing stuff, positive stuff, and they will do a positive stuff too as well. And I love what I do. I like to dance and sing and write songs. And when Bernie was running the president, I write a song called "Let's Get Together." And I listen to him talk a lot. So, you know, I took some of his words, and I made it up a song with the score, "Let's Get Together." Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, the young people from the Northeast Kingdom, the Kingdom All-Stars. Let's start off with Jazzy. You wanna say a few words? She's the shy one of the two.
Yeah. I'm Jasmine Bogey. Me and Liza are from a band called the Kingdom All-Stars. We're from the Northeast Kingdom. I'll say, I started off just as kind of a... It was just kind of for fun. It was just kind of like I had a karaoke machine. And, you know, it was just kind of entertainment for me. And then I realized that I really kind of liked it. And so I started playing in like local talent shows and stuff. And that's when I heard about the band, the Kingdom All-Stars. And so that's an audition process. And so I auditioned a couple of times and didn't get in, but it taught me a lot. And I'm here now, and the band has been very successful for me. But yeah, music has just kind of grown on me. And I'm very glad that I chose that path.
Liza?
Hi, I'm Liza. I would also echo that I started pretty young with music. I remember being very little, probably about that tall. And I would listen to songs on the radio with my parents on drives home. And then I'd go home, run to my little keyboard and start playing it. They're like, "Did you just hear that on the radio?" And I'm like, "Yeah." And it was really fun. I always like had a passion for music. And I think having such a small community and such loving parents, honestly, I wanna thank my parents a lot for the opportunities they gave me as well. I had such a welcoming environment to start my music career. And whenever I wanted to try something, my parents were right there behind me, and so was the rest of my community. And that was awesome. And I got to play cool instruments. If you ever heard of a bass clarinet, that was my instrument in high school. Loved it. Yeah, it's just something I always feel like I can play when I'm happy, listen to when I'm happy, play when I'm sad, listen to when I'm sad. Get any emotion, I can out through music. Because it always seems to bring people together.
Thanks. Let me ask the panel, and anyone who wants to jump up, please do. Are we doing enough in our schools to encourage young people to express themselves? What do we think?
I think that it depends a lot on the school. I know that there are some absolutely wonderful music programs that I've seen in Vermont and that also just programs in general that really encourage people to express themselves. When hearing that question, I was thinking about a lot of schools, when there have been walkouts, teachers have encouraged students to participate. And that's always sort of made me feel very heard when that's been something that's been going on. So I think that there is a lot of encouragement. There can always be more, but yeah.
Grace, did you want to jump on that when you were a kid? Or did you want to... please?
Yeah. One of the things you were saying, like, what does your school do to encourage you? My band, The Radiance, we placed second for the Do Good Fest competition. And my school was amazing with like reaching out, posting on all sorts of social media, like, "Hey, vote for these guys so they can play." And we did. We got second. So that was awesome, just being able to have the support of the principal and all the music community within my school. And also, just the whole Montpelier district was amazing.
Good.
And speaking to that, I think what really... I remember from going to Harwood High School is that I wanted more connection with other high schools. I wanted to be able to collaborate with other high schools and have more connection with anybody weird like me. And it was harder to find than I thought. Not because there were no weirdos at Harwood, but because I think in Vermont, there's so much innovation, so many lightning bolts. But sometimes, we're in our own little wilderness. And, you know, if a tree falls in the woods, does anybody hear it? And that became a cadence that I found in my high school experience. But then there would be so much support that would come from certain years, certain administrative systems. And suddenly, there was this big surge of funding in our art department. I remember when I was in ninth grade, the art department was totally redone. We got a photo studio. And we got funding that was spearheaded from my sister's generation of high school students to have a café in the middle of the high school. We could have jazz, and we could have bluegrass bands, and we could have any kind of music we wanted. And it didn't have to be a student band. We could hire bands. And we painted it, like this crazy orange color. It showed art on the wall and had galleries. And it was a beautiful thing. And then a couple of years later, I came back to the school, and the café had changed into a lunch break room for not students. I don't know for who. But I hope they loved my paint job. But it did really teach me, I think, that the funding and the subsidizing of the art department and the music department that came through my school, when it did, really made that difference and brought such sparkle and energy to the school. And I also experienced the feeling of having that rug pulled out from under us. And I think it gave me the tenacity to wanna fight for my inspiration, for my art, and for everybody's art and creativity, all the more.
Said, do you wanna jump in on that? Did you sense that there's the kind of support for the arts there should be?
I mean, I went to Burlington High School, PHS, in 2006 and 2007. That's where I made all my bandmates. You know, that's where I met the Tanzanian Congo. So I wasn't really doing the music at that time, but high school really put my band together. That's where I all started it.
Good.
We went all to the same school, and that's how we ran up to each other's. And one was speaking French, one was speaking Swahili, and I was speaking English. And we were just motivated. And we made producer David Cooper, and we just went from there.
I was just thinking, about 100 years ago when I was mayor of Burlington, we started a program. My then-to-be wife... My then-to-be-wife put it together. It was called 242 Main. There you go. And I'll tell you, you know, in Washington, you play with a trillion dollars here, trillion dollars there. I don't know how many, it was a few thousand dollars that we managed to scrape together in the basement of Memorial Auditorium. And what we did is we appreciated that, you know, not every kid in Burlington was going to go to Harvard or Yale. And that there were kids who were creative, were just not fitting in. You know, they were, you would call them the nerds and the...
The nerds and the weirdos.
Yeah, the weirdos, that's right.
Yeah.
And...
Otherwise known as theater kids when you didn't know what to do with them. You just throw them in the theater department.
Something like. And what we said is, all right, you guys literally are going to help physically build the structure. You can have any music you want. Some of it was louder than you can believe. I couldn't go near there. And you can do anything you wanted except drugs and smoking and alcohol. And other than that, it was yours. And the end result is attracted all kinds of kids who brought all kinds of, was it punk rock at that time?
I was in a mosh pit in that basement at Memorial Auditorium. Yes, sir, I was.
There you go.
With straight edge Xs on my hands. I remember so well, yes.
All right. And it, you know, turns out they could do a documentary movie about it or something. But it just, the kids just took it and ran with it. And they did extraordinary things. And it was, it really had an impact on a whole lot of young people's lives. So the bottom line is that when we have a $900 billion military budget and where we have a tax system that allows billionaires to pay less in taxes than you do, you know what? I think we can come up with a few bucks to expand arts in America. And again, to me, it is not just the result of the music or the books or the theater. It is allowing people to understand that it is okay to express their, not only their views, their feelings about the world in which they live, about their own pain and joy and sorrows. That that's a good thing. And we want to encourage that. So I think the goal of today is to figure out, you know, take the message back and let's do that. All right, with that, let's open it up. We were in, Grace and I and the Northeast Kingdom All-Stars were in White River earlier today. We had some great questions. For example, somebody asked us about the relationship of music and mental health. And you had some, when we started off, I'm going to ask you that question. What's the relationship between music and mental health? What's your judgment?
Yeah, that is, I'm a place that is super near and dear to my heart. In fact, my brother Lee is here now today. And growing up, he had epilepsy. He developed nonverbal learning disorder as well as PTSD through time spent being misunderstood. And the developmental time in a kid's life is so powerful. And when you don't know where you belong, I find that music, art, television turned into kind of my binky. It was sort of that place I could go where, and my brother and I would snuggle up. And I was a thumb sucker, so we'd sit there. And for me, most recently, working with Upper Valley Services, which is where Lee has his incredible staff of people that are there to support him because he can't drive. And it's unlikely that he will be able to hold down a full-time job. But he has people living with him who, on a day when Lee writes a poem, on a day when Lee draws his beautiful artwork, it's not just a beautiful day for him. He's made somebody else happy. And that transcends what your diagnosis is. That is medicine. That is pure heartfelt connectivity. And it's why his staff, that the burnout in the mental health world is so real. And it's a real challenge every day. But the burnout goes away when you get the reward every day.
Okay, I think we got a couple of Helly you got to rerun around. Do we have another mic or just you? Okay, there she is. All right, anyone have this question or a comment? All right, why don't we start right up front? Make life easier for Helly. If you could stand up, please.
Hi, I'm in the education field and I'm aware of the tremendous, tremendous shortage of teachers and exodus from that profession. In June alone, there were over 20 to 25 visual and performing arts teacher vacancies in Vermont, which is unheard of in the past. And so my concern is that if we don't have the support in the infrastructure in education, I don't know how this is going to move forward. So I wanted to put that point out there. And my question for you, though, is what are the action steps? This is amazing and I'm so excited to be here and feel like this is such a privilege. And I'm so happy that we have you all as champions to promote the arts in our communities. But what's an action step?
I think, let me deal with the action step and go back to your first question, first point. The action step is to make the establishment understand that art is not just something that's frivolous. It's not just the fudge on the cake. It's essential, it's basic. You cannot be an educated society if we don't have a strong arts presence. That we want our young people. We were in White River earlier this year. I called on a girl, but 12 years old, I don't know. She stands up and she said, "Oh, I just wrote a book," which was published on Amazon or something. All right, that's what we want. We want kids to be fearless, to be able to write whatever music you want, to have the guts to get up and perform before people, not easy all of the time, not easy to write the music you write or to do the art that you do. And that's what art is about, is creating a society where people are free and feel confident in expressing what's in their soul. Because what is in their soul is in your soul and in my soul. That's a universal thing. We all have similar type feelings and emotions. Your second question is a more mundane question. That is, we have a real crisis in education. All over this country, we're seeing, and COVID exacerbated it. We're seeing teachers leaving the profession. I got to tell you, I've been all over Vermont talking to kids and to teachers. And I do not shock you by telling you there's a mental health crisis in our state and in the nation for a variety of reasons, COVID being one of them. But teachers today are asked to do so much more than was the case 10 or 20 years ago. They spend half their time counseling kids. You know, they're not just teaching English or math. They're dealing with the emotional problems that many of their kids are having. And this generation of kids, let me tell you something. They are going, they've gone through COVID, which has disrupted their lives, correct? It's isolated them. They're going through the fear of climate change and what kind of world they will be living in when they have kids. They are dealing with this horror of gun violence in school. When we went to school, you didn't have drills hiding under your desk if there's an active shooter in the building. And they go through that too. That's a lot. That's a lot to place on a generation. So, you know, the also, one means of allowing them to express their views. But in terms of the teachers, we've got to raise teachers' salaries. We have legislation in there that says no teacher in America should be starting off at less than $60,000 a year. So, I mean, there's a number of things that we have to do. We have to transform our culture to say that education actually is important. May not be as important as paying a professional football player $50 million a year, but you know, we do think it's important who teaches our kids, who does the work with childcare and so forth and so on. So it's, I think, a cultural change to appreciate what teachers do and what educators do in general. Okay, other questions? Helly's gentleman over there?
Hello. I was just going to bring up the point, Bernie, about COVID, living through that and how that has effects on everybody, but especially the youth. And then on top of that, you know, the violence and the division in this country. And to have arts express that and bring us together, I think is very important. Totally enjoying everybody's music today. And if you guys want to answer how the times have affected what you do...
Great question.
That would be great.
Right, you guys are living in tough times. And how has the times you're living in impacted your lives and your art? Good question.
So I have...
Stand up.
Okay, I have a lot to say about this. So the pandemic, I guess, we went under lockdown right after I turned 13. So most of my developmental years were really spent in quarantine. I'm 16 now. And it was just sort of, it felt like such an important time for me to be getting out, to be talking to people. But I was locked in my house. That was when I figured out that I was trans. I also... Okay. Hello? Okay, we're good. I also... That was when I figured out I was trans. And I also got diagnosed with OCD, obsessive compulsive disorder, which really messed with my life and has been very, very hard. But I've always, I've always really been able to turn to music throughout all of this, whether it's listening to other music or writing my own. I know that I have a whole folder of songs on my computer, maybe 100 songs at this point that I have written at various points throughout the pandemic, in various crises, when I'm struggling, when I'm happy. Just that really writing... Oh my God. Just writing has really, really been able to help me throughout all of this. But it's been really hard, it's still really hard.
Okay, anybody else want to jump in? You live in tough times, those kids. Yeah, jump in.
Yeah, I just want to speak to the song that we sang earlier called "Be Him." And that's one that Alex wrote. And also, just writing during tough times, I think I can speak to that as well as probably all of you guys. Writing is something that comes easy to me when I have a lot on my mind, especially when the thoughts aren't all positive. And I wrote one of my favorite songs called "Awake." One of the main lines being like, how am I supposed to stay awake? Kind of getting all of my emotions out there and I feel a lot better. It's very therapeutic to, when I'm really struggling, to just sit down in front of my piano, play some stuff, write some things. And it's just, it makes me calm down in a way that nothing else really can. And that's one of the reasons why I love music and why I turn to music, especially during hard times.
Anybody else want to come in?
I would say that the one piece that affected me deeply was having to cancel Grand Point North Music Festival. And that, for those of you who don't know, that's a festival. Bernie, you were there for one of the last ones that was held. And what I realized was missing from my life in having to be the person who explained to everybody, sorry, staffing issues, sorry, we can't, we can't hold the festival, it's not safe. I can't be held responsible, was that I felt the burden for the first time of being something more than just an artist and just a single citizen. But I felt a responsibility to figure out what fundamentally was going wrong and what is still going wrong. It's been four years and I'm still not able to pull together that festival and make it happen and make all the stars align. And it taught me what I had taken for granted before COVID, very much so. And on top of that, and hearing about the stories of what you guys went through and how difficult it must have been to go through education in that space. Because in a way, you were already part of and a product of a system that was failing you. I felt, you know, I felt that I was a part of a system or had built an infrastructure that was ultimately something that Vermont couldn't quite handle bringing back to life. Because so many of the people that were working on the festival went on to take on other jobs. And I think it took some, it took a lot of time for me to understand exactly what needed to happen. It's part of why I'm here today, is to understand and to learn from you all and from these new, young, amazing creators, exactly what it will take beyond just a few people showing up, bringing the dignity back to the teaching people and attracting teachers to come to Vermont. What a place to come and teach and help creative people. What a brilliant idyllic situation. If only the pay was better, if only, you know. And I think that it's true, teachers don't need to be therapists, but art is therapy. And I think that's really the piece that, for me, really changed in COVID times.
Okay, other questions?
Hi, Bernie, I want to thank you and also a woman named Jane, who you're close to, for supporting 242 Main back in the day. And also, I know, Grace, you went to the Governor's Institute of the Arts.
Yes.
And that's an amazing thing in Vermont for young artists.
Incredible resource.
I just wanted to say, I'm affiliated with Big Heavy World and Jim Lockridge. And we're trying to get 242 Main back. There's a lot of, and we're working with, we're working on the mayor and on Brian Pine and Sito. And we're working hard to, whatever they do with Memorial Auditorium, that 242 comes back to the basement. And I want to tell everybody one more thing. I worked in Chicago during the height of the crack epidemic. And the arts programs were the saviors of the low economic impact kids. Right now, there's a lot of arts for gentrification people and, you know, all the cool stuff in Burlington. But there's not a lot of stuff for kids from low economic backgrounds and immigrant kids. And the arts and night basketball and things like that saved Chicago. So people are talking about violence in Burlington. And they don't have youth programs. They don't have a youth commission anymore. And that is what you need.
Thank you. Why don't you take a walk in the, any of you folks in the back want to be heard? All right, Helly, go get them.
Hi, Alexis Coke. I'm the choral director at Essex High School. Just a couple of people have brought up that, like, what are our action steps or what should we be doing? And this is clearly an area that I talk about all of the time. But one thing, there's two major things I think we should be putting our resources and our money into. And one is, there, we need to be campaigning. We need to be campaigning on the radio and educating the people of Vermont on the benefits of music for their children. There are so many amazing benefits that you guys have already brought out about our emotional health. And that is the biggest piece for me. But there's also studies saying that our autoimmune systems will actually benefit from making music. And when you sing collectively with a large group of people, your heartbeats actually beat together. And there is just so much information and so many studies that have come out that people just don't know the information. And I've heard other campaigns, like Milk Does the Body Good on the radio and TV. And why aren't we doing that? Everyone knows the benefits of STEM and why we value it in our society. But for some reason, we're not still getting that same thing for the arts. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
No, that's a great point.
No, yeah, it's funny that you said that, Bernie looked at me because I literally was saying the same heartbeat conversation down, down south when earlier today, we were discussing it, that the connectivity isn't just within the arts and social network that we have. Culture, science, I mean, look at what Da Vinci did. He would draw a picture and then invent a helicopter. He would feel, you know, and Einstein would play the violin and then go in, you know, come up with an incredible theoretical, whatever physics or I don't know what, MC Square, peg, round hole. Anyways, to me, and I was on an airplane just the other day and I spoke with a guy who has been helping with the packaging, working with Seventh Generation, trying to help figure out how to get these plastics from one state into another. He's a scientist, but he was grooving out to his favorite band while he was figuring out an idea. It's not just one department or another department. It's not, sorry, Grace, you can't read music, you can't be in the band. It's all connected. And I 100% and I agree and I appreciate the actionable statements that you're making as well as the subtler ones, which I feel are so empowering. And, you know, this is civilization. It includes all of it, you know? So thank you for that.
Yeah, that's a beautiful point. If I can make one more, that the other place we can be putting a lot more resources and money, if we can get it, is into our after-school programs. Because our students, our music students and theater students and artists stay at the high school until 9:00 PM most nights because that's where they feel at home with their community. And they're not going home and doing the drugs that we are talking about because they are invested in their school as a community. And if we can actually have people who are paid to do this instead of volunteering our endless... instead of volunteering our endless hours, we could have, like, really sustain that and help more students. Thanks.
Well, I could not agree with you more. I was, a year and a half ago, chairman of the Budget Committee. I did help write the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan. We tripled, tripled funding for after-school programs. Triple funded. And we're going to find-- and that had a real impact here in Vermont. Okay, other questions? Helly, we've got something, you find them.
Hi, thank you, Bernie. My question is about AI. Is Washington going to do something to protect writers, artists, all the creative community with some kind of a platform? Because the Writers Guild has been on strike for going on three months. And there's no end in sight.
Now, you raise a very important question. And we could talk about AI for many, many hours and its huge impact on all aspects of our society. But it-- and I'm sure all of you have dabbled in it, but I was just last night talking to somebody who was telling me that, you know, press releases and all types of stuff are now coming out through AI. And we strongly support the strike of the union, who are among many other issues, fighting to make sure that AI doesn't take their jobs. And so you raise a very important-- the other issue that I want to put on people's minds and the musicians as well, is the degree to which we live in a society where a smaller and smaller number of large corporate interests control media. And to do big, you're going to have to make your way in into what will, you know, the establishment media accept? To what degree is there a censorship? Do you have thoughts on that?
I worked with Disney for 10 years in the midst of this. So AI, being a piece of it, but actually more about outsourcing and creative folks from all walks of life. We call at Disney, we call them Imagineers. I was an Imagineer. And it's a very cool job until they've replaced you with-- and it's not just that it's not people, it's that they take an amalgamation. And it's not only Disney that does this. It's all silos of industry will take something until they generate a general consensus for it. And then they can dig down into it once they know. I think I was there as their resident weirdo Imagineer to make sure that they were ticking that box. But what's more interesting to me about what this discussion brings up is, is it because we're afraid that we're going to be replaced? Because if that's the fear we have, I believe more than ever that enriching the arts and proving that humans have the only and really most amazing capacity with our consciousness that we were given to bring something completely snowflake individualized into the world. The only thing like it is what we can generate. Otherwise, we're just an algorithm.
Good point. Okay, Helly, where are you? Okay.
In the dire years of World War II, when England was facing being overrun by Nazi Germany, Winston Churchill was approached and they told him we need to do away with all funding to the arts. His reply was, no. If we eliminate the arts, then what are we fighting for?
Yes.
Well, you know what? Maybe we'll take one more question--
Absolutely.
--running late. Somebody this afternoon in the White River made the point that in a-- in a world which tragically is being increasingly fractured, where we need international cooperation in a way that we never had to deal with future pandemics, to deal with climate change. As we speak, in the Beijing area of China, a million people have been displaced because of floods. And at the same time, in Phoenix, the temperature has been over 110 degrees for 31 straight days. The last thing in the world we need is the vision in the world. We need countries coming together to deal with the huge international crises that we face. And what somebody suggested, you know, music is one of those unifying elements of life. Doesn't matter where you live, what country, what language you speak, people do music. And maybe music is a tool that we need to help bring the world together a little bit better than we have. All right, last question or comment.
Yeah, what are some barriers you've encountered pursuing your music?
Say that again?
What are some barriers you've encountered for pursuing your music? And this is actually for everyone but you, Bernie, for the students, Grace and Said.
Okay, great, guys.
I have a lot to say about this as well, but we're going to be done soon, so I'll be quick. So I have a chronic illness called POTS. And it has made it very, very difficult for me to sort of plan when I'll be available, when I'll be up for attending rehearsals and gigs. There have been some times where I-- we've had a big gig, like we played at Jazz Fest. And after that, I was out of commission for two days, just fully bedridden. But I would not want to stop for anything because it is what keeps me feeling so happy and encouraged by everything. Oh my God, sorry. And I think that just things happen and so many things have made it hard for me to do what I do. But I never want to give up. And here I am now, and this is amazing.
All right. And now, are you guys ready? From the Northeast Kingdom to South Burlington, the Kingdom, Northeast Kingdom All-Stars. Guys, come on. I would just like to note that the Kingdom All-Stars, we're from the Northeast Kingdom of Vermont, the lowest population of the smallest part of the state and the smallest state in America. We have nine members, but everyone is on vacation or at work or playing football. So we put together a trio. And this band, including Jasmine Bogie here, she wrote "Willoughby Nights," which is going to be in our set. And it won the International Songwriting Competition by popular vote. That meant that we contributed-- yes. So the band competed across the world, China, South America, everyone, and we still won. And "Willoughby Nights" video still has about 10,000 views right now. So I'm very proud of these kids. They're going to just light it up. Thank you.
Well, sometimes I go out by myself and I look across the water. And I think of all things, what you're doing. And in my head, I paint a picture.